Today on the Matt Walsh Show, I have found the next school board that I'll be visiting, but I'm not going alone this time. I'll tell you about that today. Also, the recall of Governor Newsom in California fails miserably. What can we as conservatives learn from that, if anything? Plus, I have a few thoughts on the tragic death of Norm MacDonald. And what about the story of General Milley going directly to the Chinese government to circumvent Trump? Isn't that treason? Finally, in our daily cancellation, we'll deal with this question. Is it white supremacy to tell kids in school to be quiet and behave themselves? One teacher thinks so, and he shared his thoughts on TikTok. We'll talk about that today, and much more on the Matt Walsh Show. Last month, the far-left school board in Loudoun County, Virginia, passed one of the most far-reaching and radical trans policies in the country. Under the new rules, male students who identify as female will be able to use female restrooms and locker rooms. Of course, females who identify as males will be able to do the reverse. But you notice that there are never as many girls wanting to access the boys locker room as there are boys wanting to access the girls locker room. Same for sports teams. A strange coincidence, isn't it? But the policy goes beyond sports teams and locker rooms. It also requires teachers to use the preferred pronouns of their students. Now, magnanimously, teachers will not be punished if they have an unintentional slip and accidentally utter an incorrect, read "correct" pronoun. But any teacher who intentionally, and with malice aforethought, dares to use proper grammar in their classroom will be in violation and, you know, suffer the so far vaguely outlined consequences. This part of the policy is particularly odious. I mean, it's all odious, but this presents special complications because gender-confused kids can quite literally change their pronouns on a daily or hourly basis. That's part of what it means to be fluid. Like, I mean, it doesn't really mean anything to be fluid, but if it means anything, it means it can change, by the second maybe. And they might invent new pronouns. On the spot, they might demand that their teachers speak an absolute gibberish, and the teacher will be expected to remember which gibberish and then change to different gibberish if they're instructed to do so. All in all, teachers are being made to affirm falsehoods, to speak untruths, to babble incoherently, to reject the rules of grammar and the English language, and ultimately to abandon their role as educator in favor of becoming high priests of the leftist religion. Now, many teachers in the county and across the country seem more than happy to fill this role. We're already filling it, many of them. But some have resigned in protest or filed lawsuits to challenge the new rules. One teacher, Tanner Cross, an elementary physical education instructor in the district, was fired after speaking out against the policy during a meeting, a school board meeting a few months ago. Let's listen to his remarks again, because they were, it's very brief, but powerful and true. Here he is.
My name is Tanner Cross, and I am speaking out of love for those who suffer with gender dysphoria. 60 Minutes this past Sunday interviewed over 30 young people who transitioned, but they felt led astray because lack of pushback or how easy it was to make physical changes to their bodies in just three months. They are now detransitioning. It's not my intention to hurt anyone, but there are certain truths that we must face when ready. We condemn school policies like 80-40 and 80-35 because it will damage children, defile the holy image of God. I love all of my students, but I will never lie to them regardless of the consequences. I'm a teacher, but I serve God first, and I will not affirm that a biological boy can be a girl and vice versa, because it's against my religion, it's lying to a child, it's abuse to a child, and it's sinning against our God.
Now, Cross was, as I said, fired for that. He was fired for disagreeing with the school board. That, they decided, is an offense worthy of termination. Fortunately, a judge stepped in and reinstated Cross to his position, clarifying that school boards cannot, in fact, fire teachers for disagreeing with them. It's public comments. You're supposed to stand up there and give your opinion. And they fired him for giving an opinion they don't like. Tanner is one teacher taking a brave stance against sinister lunacy. There are others, and there are parents too, but they're outnumbered. And so I would like to help change that. That's why I will personally be coming to Loudoun County, Virginia on September 28th, which is the date of their next school board meeting, to help lead a rally against all of this madness. The rally will be at 5:00 PM on September 28th at 21,000 Education Court in Ashburn. Now, some of us will also try to speak during the meeting itself, but the board has changed the rules in recent months to make it harder to do that. They won't allow crowds inside the building during public comments. They can set the time limit for public comments down to one minute if they decide. These are obviously tactics meant to mute voices of dissent, which is why I want to show up with hundreds and hundreds of those voices and set up shop right outside the building. And I'm asking anyone in the vicinity to come and make your voice heard as well. Now, I can tell you from my part that, you know, I don't want to just hang out on the sidelines and complain into a camera anymore. I mean, I'm still going to complain into the camera, but my efforts will go beyond that. Those who push evil and insanity must be confronted directly, in person. Schools that harm children have to be confronted. That we can all sit around lamenting the disintegration of our culture, saying, "Oh, man, isn't it too bad that they're mutilating the minds and souls and bodies of a generation of children? Gee, what a shame." "Oh, well, let's see what else is on TV." Or we can get up, get out, and do something about it. There's power in numbers, but those numbers have to be mobilized and brought together in one place. Numbers don't mean anything. All this stuff about being the silent majority. I hate that phrase, "silent majority." I don't think it's true. I don't know if it's true. I doubt that it's true. I almost hope that it isn't, because shame on us if we're in the majority still and silent. Doesn't mean anything. It's not anything to be proud of. "We're in the majority, and we're too afraid to say anything. Yay, go us." Numbers don't mean anything if we are silent and fractured and disorganized and too afraid to speak above a whisper, content to voice our disapproval through, you know, sad-faced emojis on social media. Now, I announced this rally on Twitter a couple days ago, and already I've heard from the opposition in Loudoun County. They are, to say the least, not happy that we're coming. More than one person has threatened violence against me. These are people who are so determined to rob young girls of their privacy and their identity that they will threaten to assault or kill you if you try to prevent it. They believe so strongly that boys should be in the girls' bathroom that they will, they say, commit violent felonies to ensure that it happens. Now, that makes me afraid, not for myself. I'm still coming. You're not going to scare me away. But for the kids whose minds and bodies these slobbering maniacs, these predator freaks are trying to destroy. Another criticism I've heard is that I'm not from Loudoun County. I'm an outside agitator, they say. This is none of my business. Well, even if that's true, I'm making it my business. Protecting children is everybody's business. Opposing child abuse is everybody's business. I don't care where kids are being harmed. It doesn't become any less outrageous or any less of a concern if it's happening in a different zip code. Your zip code is different. Go away and let us brainwash these kids in peace. Sorry, I don't find that argument terribly compelling. And besides, outside forces, national advocacy groups, Hollywood media, politicians, routinely inject themselves into these issues to ensure that schools and towns and states are run as they prefer. I can guarantee that if a school board passed a rule forbidding biological males from entering the female restroom, Hollywood celebrities and the Human Rights Campaign and CNN and all the rest of them would be chiming in on the issue, calling for boycotts, everything else. And none of the people telling me to butt out and mind my business would be saying the same to them. So this is a one-way street. When they need reinforcements from national figures, they're not shy about going out and getting them. But if the other side does the same, suddenly they become firm proponents of the principles of subsidiarity. I'm not going to abide by rules that change depending on whose side they benefit. Not going to happen. So complain all you want. Tell me I don't belong. Tell me this is none of my concern. Threaten to kill me. I'm still going to be there. One other point. Tanner Cross, in his brief but really great speech, was correct that this is a religious rights issue. It's also correct to argue, as I just have, that this is a privacy and safety issue. Okay, all of that is true. And those seem to be the main points that we on this side, the sane side, make. That, you know, this religious liberty, it infringes on privacy of girls in locker rooms, and it's also unsafe. That's all true. Those are all good points. But this is also, we have to keep insisting, something bigger and broader than that. More than anything else, more important than religious rights or even safety, is truth. This is about truth. Truth is the most important thing. Truth is more important than liberty. It's more important than life itself. There could be no liberty without truth. There could be no life, at least not a life worth living, without truth. All of the good things in life, love, freedom, you name it, all of it, they're all predicated on truth. They all exist within truth. The trans agenda is, more than anything, an attack on truth. It is an attempt to build a society which fundamentally rejects and does not recognize truth. They want us all to live outside of truth. They want our kids to be educated in lies, in darkness, not in truth, not in light. That's the battle we're fighting first and foremost. And it will certainly take more than a rally at a school board to win that fight, but you have to start somewhere. And so I hope you'll join us. Let's get now to our five headlines. You know, if you haven't done it yet, you really have to taste Moink's meat. Wish I'd phrased that differently. You know, the reason I love Moink is you get the highest-quality meat that you've ever tasted while supporting real family farms. Moink delivers grass-fed and grass-finished beef and lamb, pastured pork and chicken, and wild-caught Alaskan salmon directly to your door, helping family farms become financially independent outside of big agriculture. Their animals are raised outdoors, their fish swim wild in the ocean, and Moink meat is free of antibiotics, hormones, sugar, and all other junk that you find in the prepackaged meat aisle. Sign up at moinkbox.com/walsh to get a year of bacon for free, and then you can pick the meats you want delivered with your first box. You can change what you get each month, and you can cancel anytime. Moink was founded by an eighth-generation farmer who was featured on Shark Tank. Host Kevin O'Leary said it's the best bacon he's ever tasted. I've also tasted the bacon, and I can tell you that, along with all the other meat, it is delicious. So join the Moink movement today. Go to moinkbox.com/walsh right now. And listeners to this show will get one year of bacon for free. That's one year of the best bacon you'll ever taste. But for a limited time, spelled M-O-I-N-K-box.com/walsh. That's moinkbox.com/walsh. You know, AOC's fans have been desperate to come up with a defense for her showing up to the Met Gala to drink cocktails with rich people, supposedly in an attempt to, you know, this was her dunking on the rich people by showing up to their party, right, and hanging out with them and taking pictures with them. But I thought this was, it's a really hard thing to defend. So in fairness to people on that side, to AOC's fans, to her groupies, it's pretty indefensible. So when you're trying to come up with a defense, there's not a lot available to you. There isn't a good argument available to you. But I thought this from Isaac Saul, who's the founder of something called Tangle News. He said, "This is all about envy and jealousy, really." All the people who are accusing AOC of having a double standard, being a hypocrite. He says, "Every single person on this website tweeting about AOC would cut off one of their own fingers to go to the Met Gala and interact with the people they spend all day tweeting about." Is that, you really think that, Isaac? You actually think that? You, as a man, you think that most people, including men, are dying to go to the Met Gala? We would just cut off our fingers to go there and hang out with celebrities? That's actually my nightmare. I would cut off my, I'd cut off my hands to not go. If I was given a choice between going to the Met Gala, only two choices, go to the Met Gala or cut off your hand, I'm saying hand me the butcher knife. That's not even a tough choice to make. Already, like, going to any event of that sort is already my nightmare. You take away all the left-wing crazies and all the degenerate, you know, celebrities that are there. It's already a nightmare for me. Everyone's in formal attire, and you're just kind of like, there's nothing to do. You're just sort of hanging around. There's no central activity for everyone to do. You're not watching anything, okay? So you're all, what do you do? You just, you hang around. You make small talk the entire time. Absolute nightmare. And I've been involved in, certainly not the Met Gala, but go to fundraising banquets. I've been to a lot of fundraising banquets in my day, and that's what the Met Gala is, supposedly. Been to a lot of fundraising banquets. I've spoken at a lot of fundraising banquets, and I can tell you for sure, getting up in front of everybody and speaking, for me, is much less nerve-wracking than having to filter around the crowd and talk to people. And then you factor in the people that are there, it makes it hell. So... This is why, again, I can't share a country with these people. This is why the country needs to break apart. I don't know how to share a country with the kind of man who thinks that most men are dying to go to the Met Gala. He's living in a different universe. I don't know who this person is or where they're coming from. Speaking of a different universe, California. This is from CNN now. "California's Democratic Governor Gavin Newsom has defeated the effort to remove him from office, according to a projection from the CNN Decision Desk, caving off a recall effort that was born in partisan anger over his pandemic response, but ended with a vote of confidence in his strategy to combat it." He gave a speech and said a bunch of stuff. We're not going to play any of those clips, because who cares? The, you know, the final tally here appears to be not very close. But what I was really interested in, some of this exit polling data. So it says, "About 45% of the electorate say that Newsom's policies on the pandemic have been about right, with about 1/3 calling his policies too strict, and the remainder saying they're not strict enough," according to a California exit poll conducted by CNN or for CNN. "There's broad support for COVID mitigation measures in the state, with more than 6 in 10 saying that getting vaccinated is more of a public health responsibility than it is a personal choice. The pandemic remains at the top of voters' minds, with about 1/3, the highest share of any issue, saying it's the biggest issue for the state, according to the exit poll." So you have the majority of voters who either are in favor of the pandemic response, which has decimated civil liberties in the state, decimated small businesses. A majority are either in favor of it, say this is just right, or they want more. California has not gone far enough. They're hungry for more restrictions on their liberty. They're going to the government and saying, "I am still too free." And there are still some small businesses that have survived, and I don't think they should. Take away everything else. Come to my house, put a padlock on my front door, and lock me in my home. You could chain me to my couch, how about? As long as you keep the TV on. And put a straw in my mouth and just start feeding me the entire time, like a gerbil. That's what they want. Put me in a, just put me in a glass case like a gerbil. Put some feeders there, and as long as I have a TV, I'll be good. That's the attitude of many of these voters in California. I think the effort to recall Newsom was admirable. I think it was the right thing to do, to hold him accountable, at least to some extent, or at least, or attempt to hold him accountable. Larry Elder put in a great effort. He'd certainly be a much better governor than Gavin Newsom. That's not saying much. I mean, I think Larry Elder would be a good governor on his own merits. But, you know, an actual gerbil would be a better governor than Gavin Newsom. So all of that is good, you know, worth the effort and everything. But I can tell you that I never had any hope in this effort at all. I never really entertained the possibility that voters would come out and vote for a Republican, especially, you know, an actual conservative Republican. Not a celebrity like Schwarzenegger, who says that he's a Republican, but is actually liberal. There's very little chance of, really no chance of that happening. Because this is California. And as hard as it is for us to understand, for many of us to understand, this is what many of the people there want. You know, I go to California, as I was just in California recently. You know, and you go to Los Angeles or San Francisco or many of the cities in California. And it's a dystopian wasteland. It was already trending in that direction before COVID, but this has been the nail in the coffin. And so someone like me, I could wander around Los Angeles disgusted and thinking, "How can anyone want to live like this?" And that's bad enough, but it's worse to realize that, in fact, lots of people do want to live like that. You know, California is the way that California is because of the people of California. That is the sad, stark reality that we need to start confronting. It's easy enough to blame the elites and the ruling class and the government and the media, Hollywood, academia. We could place the blame all, in all of those places. You know, all of the rich, powerful people. And they deserve an immense amount of the blame. I spend plenty of time blaming them and pointing fingers at them, and we should. But the rot goes deeper than that. It goes into the population. And when it comes down to it, California is the way that California is because of the people of California, because that's the state, that's the culture that they want. Many of them may want it because they've been brainwashed into wanting it. They've been convinced of it. They've been congealed into it. But it's still, it's what they want. And the responsibility lies with them ultimately. Our country is in the state that it's in, because many of the people in this country want it that way. This is maybe one of the reasons why I can never fully carry the mantle of populism. And maybe populism doesn't need to be this way, but very often, people who call themselves populist, all they ever do is point to the people at the top of the food chain, the rich and powerful. But I think we need to start looking amongst ourselves and realizing that the problem is also the people. And that's a much harder problem to fix, because then you realize that, even if it succeeded, I mean, it would have been great if the recall election had succeeded. You kicked Governor Newsom out. At a minimum, you've penalized him for being incompetent and also being a tyrant, being a horrible man and a horrible governor, horrible leader. So you've held him accountable, and you've punished him. But that's probably the only benefit. That's the only good that would have come of it. Because you get a Republican governor in there for a few years. That doesn't do anything to change the cultural rot. And if we're not willing to confront the fact that the rot goes all the way down into the population, into the people, into our homes and our communities, that we're going to continue with this idea that we can solve all of our problems just by electing the right people. And yet elections come and go, and sometimes they work in our favor, sometimes they don't. But you notice the cultural decay continues apace, no matter who is in charge. Donald Trump was the president for four years. Culturally, societally speaking, what good did it actually do? Can anyone say that we're in a better spot today culturally than we would have been had it been a Democrat in office? Maybe. But now we're just talking about degrees of badness. Yeah, it's bad, but it would have been like one degree more bad. That's what happens when all we ever do is focus on the people at the top, and we don't start looking around us. All right, let's go next to, The Daily Beast says, "Norm MacDonald has died after a long and private battle with cancer, as management team confirmed on Tuesday. The highly influential stand-up comedian and former anchor of Weekend Update and Saturday Night Live was 61. Scheduled to perform at the New York Comedy Festival this November, had reportedly been sick with an undisclosed form of cancer for nine years, but declined to make his illness public." I just, you know, as many people have said, I'm not one to be affected by celebrity deaths. This one hurts. This might be the only one I can think of. Right, there might have been a few others, but right now is the only one I can think of that actually made much of an impact on me. Norm MacDonald was a brilliant comedian, one of the last real comedians that we have, that we had in this country. It also almost feels wrong. There are a lot of very genuine and emotional and touching tributes that people have been doing to Norm MacDonald, which in one way, he's deserving of it. But another way, it feels wrong, because Norm MacDonald himself never would have engaged in that. If Norm MacDonald was around, he'd be making fun of his own death, right? Because he never, you know, he always stayed on message. And for him, the message was the comedy, was the joke. But when I think about this, and we could talk about his career and everything and eulogize him that way, but this, the long and private battle with cancer. He had cancer for nine years and never told anyone, certainly never made it public. I'm going, I assume that some people in his family knew. I don't know that, but I think we could assume it. But it seems that nobody, even his friends and fellow comedians, no one knew about it. There's something about that, it's obviously very sad, but there's something actually inspiring about that. And the word "inspiring" has been horribly cheapened in our culture, when we call everything inspiring. But, you know, TikTok videos are supposed to be inspiring. This is really inspiring. That he was dying of cancer and chose to carry that burden himself. And not just carry it himself and not tell anybody, but he was still out there telling jokes and making people laugh. You know, in a society where we, most of us are inclined to whine and complain publicly about every pain we have, every misfortune, we stub our toe, and then next thing you know, there's a 10-tweet thread we're doing about it, and the, you know, the larger implications of our stubbed toe and everything we've learned from this tragedy of stubbing our toe. And now we got to go to therapy for the stubbed toe. You know, in this society, where we tend to operate that way, to see this, I think, is a nice corrective. Someone who chose to live with dignity didn't need to go out there and fish for pity from people. And that seems foreign to a lot of us, because for a lot of people in this culture, there's this instinctive need for pity. Where even if there's no reason for anyone to pity you, you feel like you have to come up with a reason. We talk about all the time, the victimhood competition. Everyone wrestling with each other, who's going to be the uber victim? And then, of course, in that kind of environment, where everybody wants to be a victim, if something actually bad happens to you, well then, of course, you're going to be, you're going to be spreading that everywhere. "Hey, everybody, listen to this really bad thing that's happening to me." But Norm MacDonald didn't do that at all. He had a terrible thing that he was going through, and he chose to suffer it privately and still go about his life, make people laugh. I find that extremely admirable and very rare. We don't see that very often. The only other example I can think of, Chadwick Boseman, Black Panther actor. It was the same thing. When he died of cancer, it came as a shock to everyone. He hadn't told anybody, and he was acting and never made it public. So on a rare occasion, you see this, and I find it incredibly admirable and inspiring. And, you know, we could all take a couple pages from that book, I think, probably. All right, next, what else we got here? Jimmy Kimmel. I hate to go to Jimmy Kimmel now, actually. I'm going to, but... This makes Norm MacDonald's death all the more sad. You go from Norm MacDonald, brilliant comedian, a real comedian, to Jimmy Kimmel, who is the least funny Jimmy on late-night TV. And that's stiff competition for that title. I'm not saying this because of his ideology. I don't like his politics, although I don't like his politics. But I've never heard Jimmy Kimmel tell a funny joke, ever. I'm not aware of any funny Jimmy Kimmel joke. I think he's had some funny bits that he does and skits and things, but I've never, he does these monologues every single night. Thousands and thousands of jokes that he's told in his monologues. Has there been a single funny one? I'm not sure, but this one certainly is not the first funny one. Let's listen.
It is ridiculous, but this is an interesting statistic. COVID deaths have...
COVID deaths have proven to be much higher in states that voted for Trump. Basically, if your state has more GEDs than PhDs, stay indoors. Of the 54,000 Americans who died from COVID since the start of the summer, almost one of five, one in five of them died in Florida, which my God, all those orphaned ferrets, it's a shame.
Okay, so making fun of everyone that died in Florida, because everyone who, if you died in Florida, then, then your death is, is mockable. Many of the people who died of COVID in Florida, I mean, I got news for you, Jimmy Kimmel, not everyone in Florida is, is a Republican. So in fact, some of those people were even Democrats who died. May surprise you to learn. Total disdain that these people have. It is, it is true to say that they wish death on us, they want us to die. That's not being overly dramatic. Because there's no, there's no real joke there. I have no problem, you can tell jokes about death, you could tell jokes about things that don't seem to be funny at all. Norm MacDonald was great at that. Any kind of tragedy you can name, he's told jokes, told jokes about 9/11, and they were funny. So it's not like there's anything that's off limits for jokes, but there's no joke here. It's simply, he hates these people, and he's just snickering. This is, this is just going up to someone's funeral and pointing at the headstone and laughing, that's all it is. Because it turns out you can't really be a funny comedian when you're filled with hate and contempt. And you certainly, you can't tell funny jokes about someone if you hate them. That was one of the secrets of, for Norm MacDonald, I think. That he didn't, he respected, he didn't hate, he told edgy jokes. He told jokes about people dying, but he didn't, he didn't hate anyone. When you're filled with hate and contempt, there's, there can't, there's not going to be any humor in that. But with all that said, I'm not angry to hear Jimmy Kimmel making jokes like that. Everyone in red states, they all have GEDs, not PhDs. Of course, that's not true, but I don't even consider that an insult. Personally, I would rather be around a bunch of GEDs than a bunch of PhDs. And very often, the GEDs are going to be smarter. You know, the PhDs have educated themselves into a coma. But it, it doesn't bother me for him to come out and say, in fact, I'm glad that he says it. The more that these people expose themselves and take the mask off and expose themselves for who they are, and make their, their true feelings known, I think, the better. Because this is, this is the country we live in now. And there are lots of people, especially the ones that you see on TV all the time, who really hate you and want you to die. And it's important for you to, for you to understand that. All right, let's see, what else here? This from the Daily Wire, it says, "In their new book, Peril, journalists Bob Woodward and Robert Costa claim that General Mark Milley, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, was so concerned that then-President Donald Trump would go rogue and spark a war with China, that he made a pair of secret phone calls to his counterpart point in China," per the Washington Post. It says, "According to a CNN write-up, Woodward and Costa write that after January 6th, Milley felt no absolute certainty that the military could control or trust Trump, and believed it was his job as a senior military officer to think the unthinkable and take any and all necessary precautions," according to a CNN write-up. Milley was so fearful of Trump attacking China that he appears to have undermined the Trump administration and communicated directly with Chinese officials. It says, "In a pair of secret phone calls, General Mark Milley, Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, assured his Chinese counterpart of the People's Liberation Army that the United States would not strike. One call took place on October 30th, 2020, four days before the election, that unseated President Trump, and the other on January 8th, 2021, two days after the Capitol siege." Capitol siege, yeah. Shockingly, according to Woodward and Costa, it seems Milley communicated sensitive information to a Chinese general and suggested that he would warn China ahead of time if he discovered that Trump planned to attack them. So this is the definition of treason. We heard for years and years that Trump was committing treason, that he was a traitor. He was, two unsuccessful attempts at impeaching him were based on that idea. They never could provide any evidence for it whatsoever. Never, they could never provide any evidence for, for that charge, other than, well, basically, their, their evidence was that Trump, to them, seems like the kind of guy who would be a traitor, who would commit treason. And so we're going to spend four years trying to find evidence to support this assumption that we made at the very beginning, based on nothing. Now we have actual treason. I mean, if the word treason means anything legally, then it would have to mean this. You have the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff going behind the president's back, circumventing him, and having private, secret conversations with a military leader of a foreign enemy country. If that's not treason, what is? And yet we know that there will be no consequences whatsoever. He's not going to be tried. He's not going to be charged with anything. The media won't even admit that, that there was anything wrong here. In fact, for them, the story is, this is all about how bad Trump was. They want us to believe that the story is that Mark Milley felt it necessary to take those steps. So gee, once again, that's how terrible Trump was. I, you know, Republicans, once again, are talking a big game, and they're saying they're gonna have hearings, and they're gonna look into this. I hope they do, and I hope they follow through, but you know, my fear is it's gonna be just like it was with Benghazi. There were, we heard about Benghazi for years and years and years, and the Republicans did all kinds of hearings about it, and they talked about it on the campaign trails, and it came up, you know, on cable news, and they talked about it on Fox and things like that. But then, was anybody ever held accountable for it? Did anything real, actual, actually happen? Were there any tangible consequences for anybody? I don't think there was, and I don't expect that there will be in this case, sadly. Finally, from Study Finds, it says, "Overeating obviously leads to excess weight, right? Well, a team of scientists says not so fast. It's actually what you eat, not how much you eat that leads to obesity. Their study finds processed food and rapidly digestible carbohydrates may be what's really behind society's growing waistline." They did a whole study on this, and there's an entire article suggesting that it's not just about the quantity of the food, it's also the type of food. So if you're eating a lot of food, but it's healthy, and there's good protein, and you're eating fresh vegetables and that sort of thing, then you're not going to get fat, but if you're eating a lot of fast food, then you will. That's, they needed a whole study to tell us that. This is not complicated. We have been on this mission for years to make obesity seem complicated. And every week, there's a new study, oh, maybe this is what's behind the obesity epidemic. This is not, it's not a complicated thing. You don't need to be a scientist, you don't need to do any studies about it whatsoever. If you're eating a lot of junk food, and we all know what junk food is, we don't need to define it, it's kind of like the definition of pornography with Supreme Court Justice. I don't know what it is, but I know it when I see it. So we all know what junk food is. You eat a lot of that, and you don't get exercise, you get fat. You eat healthy food, and you also move around throughout the day and get some exercise, you won't get fat. It really is that simple. We're all sitting around getting fatter and fatter, eating Doritos and watching TV, and looking at our waistlines bulge and bulge, and saying, I don't know why this is happening, someone should do another study about this, what is going on? Every day I get on the scale, and there's more, the number is higher, how is this possibly happening? Chomp. Another Dorito. Not complicated. All right, let's get now to reading the YouTube comments.
Who's rocking polka dot and flannel shirts without a shame? Do you know their name? They're the Sweet Baby Gang.
There it is, Sweet Baby Gang anthem, as promised. You better get used to hearing that, because you're gonna hear it every day, it will haunt your dreams. This is from Rachel, says, "One of my husband's male friends broke up with him on the phone. His excuse was, 'I don't want to go to your wedding if no one's wearing masks,' and one minute later finalized it with saying, 'Yeah, I'd prefer we actually just stop talking.'" Well, he really did your husband a favor. That is, that's no friend, and that's no man in the first place, so no loss at all there. I mean, I know it's gotta be pretty upsetting. First, he's not coming to your wedding, and then says, I don't want to see you ever again. But really, okay, no loss for me in my life, that should be the attitude. ZBW says, "Matt, will you cancel the Ravens for losing last night?" Yeah, I really should, but you know what? This, this is what the NFL season is now, it's always a war of attrition. And I'm not sure what exactly causes it, but the injuries. You know, the Ravens, I don't know, but there's like three people in the audience who care about this, but I'm talking about it anyway. The Ravens lost their entire, they lost their entire running back corps, they lost three running backs, mostly to non-contact injuries in practice, ACL tears. And then, this is all in the offseason. Then they lost their starting cornerback to an ACL tear. They've got like 14 guys on IR, and there's been one game. But every season, it's, it's like this, and it's easy to say that the game is faster and more violent now, actually, it is faster, but it's not really more violent than it was, you know, 20 or 30 years ago, or even 10 years ago. But that even, that can't be the explanation anyway, because so many of these injuries are non-contact, there are so many Achilles tears, ACL tears. And now it's at the point where if you win the Super Bowl, if you can keep most of your players off of the stretcher. Okay. Tina says, "My son had a small sore throat today, so I kept him home. I lied when I called and said his back hurt. Can't have him staying home for two weeks for nothing," which is the policy. Another comment like this from Lexi Bell says, "My children's doctor canceled their well-child checkup because both of them had a runny nose that day, symptom of COVID, so we have a doctor who won't see sick patients." Yeah, and you have no choice. First of all, Tina, I don't blame you for lying at all, what choice do you have? These schools that have this policy, which as I said yesterday, if you don't think about it at all, might for a second at first blush, seem like it makes sense. Well, if your kid has COVID symptoms, don't send them to school. Okay, fine, until you realize that COVID symptoms are everything, everything is a symptom of COVID. Any kind of physical discomfort at all could be a symptom of COVID. So what they're really saying is, if your child is feeling anything less than 100% totally perfect, not only can you not send them to school, but you gotta quarantine them, and then we might have to quarantine the whole class. It's not feasible, you can't function that way. And now they're doing this in doctors' offices too, and there are real consequences to that. There are real consequences in schools, where you're shutting schools down now for no reason, kids are, continue to be deprived of an education. Not that they were getting much of an education to begin with in the public school, but then in doctors' offices, so what, your child can't go in for a wellness checkup? What if he's not well? I mean, what if he has some underlying problem that the checkup may have determined? Now we're not gonna know about that. And there have been a lot of people, we, it's, there's no way to know how many. There's no way to really quantify it, but there have been many people who have died of cancer or other diseases because they weren't able to go to the doctor, or they were afraid to go to the doctor. They are, they have been made to be afraid to go to the doctor because of COVID. So it is, it is a terrible situation. TJC says, "There's no way Matt Walsh is using relief band, such a hilarious image." How could you accuse me of that, TJC? I love and adore and cherish all of my sponsors. And anytime I'm getting in the car, I always make sure that I strap my relief band on. Why is that a funny image to you? I don't understand it. Max Rex says, "Matt, stop, stop standing up for the woman who got her ass beat, she deserved it for participating in that." Yeah, that's true, the woman who participated in the MMA fight against the man. I mean, I spent most of my, the daily cancellation yesterday criticizing the announcers who went along with this spectacle and pretended to be, pretended very unconvincingly to, to support it. Yes, you blame them, you also blame the man himself for being a cheater. But that's true, that woman chose to get in the ring, she chose also to be a participant, and she didn't have to make that choice. That doesn't make it any, that doesn't make it better, that doesn't take any of the guilt off of the guy. Yes, the woman chose to get in the ring with you, but that still doesn't excuse you when now you're beating her across the head, fracturing her skull as Fallon Fox did on multiple occasions, choking her into submission, just because she chose to get in the ring with you, doesn't make it okay for you. But I think you're correct, that we gotta start pointing the fingers at the women as well, these female athletes. That would be one solution. When a quote-unquote trans athlete shows up, a man says he wants to fight women, every single woman should say, "I am not gonna do that." That he's not gonna have any competitors. And M makeshift Electric says, "The SBG anthem didn't play during the read-in the comments section. I feel betrayed." Yeah, we do have this whole graphic we want to put together, and that was gonna be paired up with the, with the SBG anthem, but I said, you know what, we gotta, we gotta play it now, we can't wait for, for anything. We've waited too long, the people need the anthem, and we need it now in our society more than ever, and now we have it. And I expect that will make everything better. I'm not sure if I've ever mentioned this to you before, but rockauto.com is a great place to find any auto parts that you might need, rather than going to an auto parts store and dealing with the fuss and hassle of all of that. Rockauto.com, a lot easier than that, you know what, you know what else? It's also the lowest prices possible, they're not gonna change their prices, they're gonna be honest with you, and you know that if you find it on rockauto.com, it's the best price you're gonna get anywhere else. They're a family business, they've been serving auto parts customers online for 20 years, you can go to rockauto.com, and you can shop for the auto and body parts that you're looking for from hundreds of manufacturers. This catalog is unique, it's very easy to navigate, and you could quickly see all the parts that are available for your vehicle, and you could choose the brand specifications and prices you prefer. One thing that I hear from people that go to rockauto.com, and I, I do talk about rockauto.com in my spare time, all the time, and one thing that everyone says is, it's very easy to find everything you're looking for, it's a really easy site to navigate, and they've got great selection and great prices. I have heard this myself so many times. So go to rockauto.com right now and see all the parts available for your car, truck, right wall shown there, how did you hear about us box? So they know that we sent you. Last week, Biden announced his authoritarian vaccine mandate, which is meant to force all companies with over 100 employees to either mandate vaccines or test their employees for COVID at least once a week. And if you haven't heard already, The Daily Wire is not going to comply. For this, The Daily Wire can face up to $14,000 for each violation. It could destroy everything they've built, but I, you know, that we've built, I should say, but I can't think of a better hill to die on than opposing medical tyranny and the erasure of freedom. That's why The Daily Wire is calling on all who are listening to help them fight this obscene and tyrannical mandate. If you join as a Daily Wire member right now, you'll be aiding and supplying the resources needed to take this all the way to the Supreme Court if necessary. So go to dailywire.com/subscribe and use code DONOTCOMPLY at checkout for 25% off. Americans have been far too willing to cede their freedoms to authoritarian bureaucrats in the name of public health. Enough is enough, so please stand with us and The Daily Wire, and most importantly, the rights of all American citizens. Now let's get to our daily cancellation. As you have noted from the opening, public schools in Virginia especially are an unmitigated disaster. Maybe it's the proximity to DC that's the problem. DC is the intellectual and spiritual equivalent of a malfunctioning nuclear reactor. Everybody in the vicinity is soaking up the metaphorical radiation and getting sick. And that brings us to Blacksburg High School in Montgomery County in Virginia, where a teacher, Josh Thompson, according to Fox News, has been posting TikTok videos to share his views on white supremacy and racism. In one video, he says that whiteness is not a race, but a racial ideology. Listen.
This is an idea that I think a lot of people have, and I want to call that in lovingly just for a moment. Yes, America contains many cultures and many races, that is not wrong. However, the problem comes when we don't think about this idea, this argument in a However, the problem comes when we don't think about this idea, this argument in a racialized way when it comes to power and power dynamics. In America, as in many of the parts of the Western world, whiteness is the dominant racial ideology. So when we think of power in terms of race, whiteness has the most power. So while there are people of many different races and cultures living in America, the fact that whiteness is the dominant racialized power structure, that is the problem and that is why we have to involve race in all of our arguments and considerations.
This is not really the point, but I have to say, I'm always annoyed and a bit perplexed by the number of cuts and edits these TikTokers need for a one-minute video. There, there's a cut after every sentence. They're not able to string together two sentences at once. Now, I speak for an hour straight on this show with no cuts at all. Many of my sentences may be rambling and unnecessary, but at least I can put multiple sentences together. These people have to cut and think about the next sentence before filming, and still it ends up being incoherent. But the greater point is that this teacher is a self-hating white freak, subjecting students to his intellectual masochism. And it gets worse. Listen to Josh Thompson's take on PBIS. PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, and is the framework used in Virginia schools for dealing with behavior problems. Now, it already sounds like permissive, new age nonsense, but it's still not enough for Josh, apparently, who believes that any attempt to control a student's behavior is, you guessed it, white supremacy.
I made a comment on one of Ms. April's recent videos about PBIS, in which I stated that PBIS is white supremacy with a hug. And a lot of y'all wanted to know more about that, so here we go. First of all, thank you to Jack Copa, who reminded me that Dina Simmons was the first to coin this term. So thank you, Jack, so much. So if PBIS concerns itself with positive behaviors, we have to ask ourselves, okay, well, what are those positive behaviors? And it's things like making sure that you're following directions and making sure that you're sitting quietly and you are in your seat and all these things that come from white culture. The idea of just sitting quiet and being told stuff and taking things in in a passive stance is not a thing that's in with many cultures. So if we're positively enforcing these behaviors, we are by extension positively enforcing elements of white culture, which therefore keeps whiteness at the center, which is the definition of white supremacy.
What a smarmy little squirrel this guy is. They really all are. And hey, I thought, what do you mean white culture? I thought white people didn't have a culture. Which is it? When they need to make a, a point like this, suddenly we as white people have a culture, but in any other context, we don't. That's why they say you're not allowed to express pride in being white. You know, any expression of white pride is racism. And you can't, you, you can't say that, well, no, I, I just am, I'm proud of my culture. If you say that, they'll say, there's no such thing as white culture. But now you're saying there is white culture and part of white culture is children, you know, following directions and behaving well. That, that sounds like a good culture. Can I be proud of that? Doesn't make any sense. But the idea here is that students, the idea is that if students have to sit quietly and behave themselves and follow directions, that's something that comes from white culture. This teacher has apparently, aside from all the other contradictions, decided that the entire continent of Asia does not exist. Classrooms in many parts of Asia are far more, far more focused on discipline than any classroom in the United States. That's why the average student in China can perform calculus and build a working space shuttle by like second grade. But Josh Thompson says that only white people expect kids to behave, which is, once again, the bigotry of low expectations or no expectations rearing its head. Because the obvious implication here is that non-white students can't be expected to behave properly or are not capable of it. This is not only incredibly demeaning, but it's also plainly false. You'll notice how the CRT cult makes sweeping assertions about the nature of whiteness and, and the things that derive from whiteness, but they never make any attempt to prove any of these assertions. This is what makes it fun and, and easy to be a member of the cult. It's perhaps the primary attraction. It almost makes me want to join the cult sometimes. Sometimes I wanted to be a member of the CRT cult for this reason, because it just had, it must be so great to be able to make any wild claim you want and never be asked to justify it or provide any evidence whatsoever. You can stand up and shout and say, spatulas are racist. If you use a spatula, you're partaking in white supremacy. Everybody just nods their head and says, wow, I never realized that this common kitchen instrument was racist. I didn't know that I was involving myself in a Nazi conspiracy every time I flip a pancake. My God, I'm so ashamed. Nobody stops and says, what, where are you getting that? Who told you this? This is the sort of privilege afforded to the left-wing race hustlers. With all that said, he is actually getting somewhere within the vicinity of an important truth. He's wrong about it being a white supremacist ploy to tell kids to behave themselves. He's wrong about all the racial aspects of this, but he is correct that the public school system uses a passive, quiet, calm memorization and regurgitation method of education. It fails in that method most of the time. I mean, you walk into the average public school classroom and it's anything but, but, but calm and quiet and organized. But that is the, the method that the entire system is built around. The reason why public school classrooms are dysfunctional is because in order to function, they need all the kids to be behaving this way, but none of them really are. And, you know, in fairness, if you're going to try to educate thousands of kids at a time on a kind of industrialized assembly line, taking them from one class to the next in 45-minute increments for seven hours a day, then you really have no choice but to go about it this way. Doesn't, it doesn't work. They have to drug the kids, half the kids, just to make it work, and it still doesn't work. But public schools, as they are currently constructed, really have no other choice. None of this has anything to do with whiteness. And it isn't designed for white kids. It is rather, as I have observed many times, including recently, it is rather designed for girls. Girls thrive in that kind of educational environment because they're better at memorization. They're better at sitting still. They're better at learning in that way. Which is why, which is why girls do better in public schools. It's why more girls are going to college. It's why fewer girls are drugged. Education is not too white. It's too feminine. But Josh Thompson's ideology may allow him sometimes to get a whiff of the real problem, to come close to identifying it, yet it won't allow him to correctly diagnose it or prescribe the right remedies for it. And that is why he is today, I must say, officially canceled. And we'll leave it there. Thanks for watching. Thanks for listening. Have a great day. Godspeed. The Matt Walsh Show is produced by Sean Hampton, executive producer Jeremy Boring. Our supervising producer is Mathis Glover. Our technical director is Austin Stevens, production manager Pavel Vadasky. The show is edited by Sasha Tolmachov. Our audio is mixed by Mike Coramina. Hair and makeup is done by Nika Geneva and our production coordinator is McKenna Waters. The Matt Walsh Show is a Daily Wire production, copyright Daily Wire 2021.
Today on the Ben Shapiro Show, Bob Woodward reports that General Mark Milley contemplated handing over American security to the Chinese to thwart President Trump and the California recall effort against Gavin Newsom is a dud. That's today on the Ben Shapiro Show. Give it a listen.